Very good. Oh, welcome everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of March 24th, 2021. Would you be kind enough and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. For the folks at home, happy spring. Tonight, we have several items on the agenda, a couple of presentations. Matt, if you'd be kind enough to put up on the screen for the folks at home tonight's agenda, so they can take a peek at it and decide how long they want to hang in with us. All right, if we could blow that up just a little bit. Okay. Very good. So tonight, we'll be having a presentation. First, we have a public hearing on proposed water district rate increase for 2021. It's the third year of a five-year schedule. Excuse me. The first item on the regular agenda is community choice aggregation. We have Glenn Weinberg here to give us an update on that program that, if you recall, is the opt-out 100% renewable energy supply for town of Red Hook residents and businesses. And he's going to give us an update on that program, and we're going to discuss moving towards the next phase of that. Then the second item is going to be a presentation by Aaron Kanan and Sarah Imboden on the Audubon Sustainable Communities Project, which we started a few months ago. We'll be discussing that proposed water district rate increase next up. And then we're going to set a public hearing, or at least notify the public. We don't necessarily have to have a public hearing on a public health emergency plan. As you may recall, the governor mandated that all municipalities develop by April of this year a public health emergency plan for future pandemics. Obviously, we've learned a lot from this particular pandemic that we're still in the middle of. And then we have a brief resolution to grant a request from the REC Commission to move some of the Parkland monies over so that they can fund a tractor for the Rec Park West properties. And then we'll be having our board reports and department reports. And that's it for tonight. So why don't we go right into announcements, if we would, Matt? Okay, first off, we do want to give you, as we try to do from time to time, a COVID update. I wish we had better news. In fact, it's a bit troubling. Dutchess County in particular has been very high, continuing to remain high. I think the figures from yesterday were positive tests of 155 for the county. This is closer to high levels as opposed to the low levels that we saw between May and September of last year, stubbornly high, and the positivity rate varying between 4% and 6%. New York as a whole, you know, not coming down as much as other states. And so, yeah, we want to remind folks, as we're all getting vaccinated, do exercise caution because some of these variants are perhaps more transmissible. So those are the stats on the county website. We also have, Matt, if you'd scroll down. We want to remind you that our website, we update this all the time. If you are still trying to arrange for appointments for vaccinations, these are just some of the pages on our website. It's on the front page there. We have a COVID button towards the left. It's a red button. Just click on it. We can answer a lot of the questions right there on the page for you. And Matt, if you'd scroll down to the next slide, we update who's eligible for for the community as well. This is New York State. By the way, you need to both reside and work in New York State. Scrolling down. And then we list many of the locations. It's not completely exhausted, but I think it has just about all the state-operated sites. And then Matt, again, if you would go down, please. Some of the other non-state designated vaccine locations and some of the pharmacies. Now, what's changed is that the pharmacies are also, you know, starting to vaccinate those who have any form of eligibility. Right now, we're at age 50 and older, and any public-facing employees. Most folks are having success with both the state and the county signup feature, and the pharmacies are showing availability as well. So that's it with COVID.
Robert, I want to interrupt real quickly. I got a message from Christine asking to let her in from the waiting room.
Sure. Unfortunately, I can't do that at the moment, but we'll get her in there.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Jacob.
Yep.
Also, we want to remind folks, D E C has issued its annual residential brush burning ban that started on March 16th, a week ago. It runs through May 14th. It's a prohibition against all burning of all woods. There are exceptions for agricultural properties, but for the folks at home to know that there was never a point in time during the course of the year where it's okay to burn leaves. I know that that's something that some folks like to do to dispose of their leaf pile. And then the last thing I'd like to let you know, as a public service, is we did have somebody who came and I believe used our Dropbox here and lost a valued, a personally valued necklace. And so if you happen to notice that, if you'd be kind enough to call the town clerk, and maybe we can put that together with the owner. Okay, so those are the announcements. We do have a public hearing. We're running just a few minutes late for that, but Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to read the public hearing notice, please.
Notice a public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on March 24th, 21, at 7:35 PM local time, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons on proposed modification of the water rates and charges for Water District Number One. The Red Hook Water Board has recommended modification of the water rates and charges to increase the minimum rate from $44.88 to $47.12 for up to 9,000 gallons, and from $5.46 to $5.73 per 1,000 gallons over 9,000, as further set forth in the schedule on file with the town clerk. Due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, the Town Hall is closed to the general public until further notice. Pursuant to Executive Order Number 202.1, as extended, issued by Governor Cuomo and advisories issued by federal, state, and local officials related to the COVID-19 virus, the public will not be permitted to attend in person. Board members are expected to participate in the public hearing via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town website at www.rehock.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandaTV23.org. Click on "Watch Live." Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to supervisor@rehock.org, and 845-758-4622 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note Water District Number One, water rate increase, in the subject. Two, written comments may be dropped in the town's Dropbox in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distance and use of masks. Three, all comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Interested persons may also comment by email or telephone to supervisor@rehock.org, and 845-758-4622 on the date of the hearing from the time of opening the hearing until the close of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that a copy of the proposed schedule of water rates is available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated March 9th, 2021, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. And you have an affidavit of publication in the journal? Okay. All right. So why don't we open the public hearing? And for background for the folks at home, the Water Board Chairman came to the Town Board back in 2018 on behalf of the Water Board, and indicated that the funding was sufficient for ongoing operations that was appropriated through the Water District levies, but that they were concerned that the infrastructure was starting to reach a point where they had to start budgeting for replacement. Some of the lines date back nearly 60 years in certain residential developments, and the water tank needs maintenance and potentially the consideration of a replacement. And in fact, there was an analysis conducted by our engineers at the time to compare some of the options, and all of those options necessitated an expenditure of over $1 million towards either rehaving the tank or replacing. And as we look to our reserve accounts, there's not nearly enough money to, you know, to do that right now. And so they proposed having a gradual five, over five years, increasing the water rates of 5% each year in order to try to sock away a little more money in those accounts so that we're better prepared. I can tell you anecdotally, you know, the folks up in Tivoli just replaced their water, water tank, water tower there. And, you know, it's well above $1 million. You're talking about, you know, a figure approaching $3 million for that aspect of the project. And so, you know, it's very prudent that the Water Board is thinking in terms of how to perhaps mitigate some of that increase that's going to come when there's significant replacement of the system. Now, in the case of the village of Red Hook, sorry, the village of Tivoli, the system dates back to 1937. So it is an older system, and yeah, so they have to replace the entire thing. They're in the process right now. If you've driven through Tivoli, and so you can take a look at the work that's being done there, but it's millions of dollars to replace all of that. So that's sort of the backdrop there. I do think it would be good for us to have the Water Board update some of those expected replacement costs, because I also understand, you know, the village of Red Hook went out to bid on their sewer system, and the bits came in well above, greater than 60% above what they expected them to be. And so these increases may turn out to be insufficient over the long haul. So we'll have to take advantage of any funding opportunities as they have when the time comes in order to mitigate those potential increases. So that said, we did get one written comment for the public hearing. It is from Renee O'Neill, and she submitting her opposition to the proposed increases based upon the economy and the impact that will have on the residents in those districts. And for the folks at home, this only affects those who live in the Water District, which includes many of our residential subdivisions. Many of the homeowners have their own individual wells, and obviously, it does not impact them. So she talks about the fact that some folks may be struggling right now, and now is not the time to raise raise the Water District fees. So the letter will be part of the public hearing record. That's all that we have received either prior or including this evening. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Jacob?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, very good. We don't have any public comments, so why don't we go right into Glenn Weinberg is with us. Glenn?
Yes, hello. Thanks, Robert. How would you like? Do you want to load the slides, or do you want me to share my screen, either way?
I think we have the slides, right? Matt, we have the Hudson Valley Community Power slide deck there.
Yeah, we do have them, but it might be easier for him to change the slides himself, so I'll let you share.
You'll do the share screen? Okay, very good. Okay. For the folks at home, we're talking about community choice aggregation. This is the innovative program that was developed, New York State authorized. We are working with many municipalities in order to effect change, to provide the demand for clean energy sources. And so we went in conjunction with many other municipalities. The partners are actually down at the bottom of that slide there. And we went out with the folks here at Jewel and received as part of an RFP process to have the residential and small business energy supply brought in from 100% renewable. That was New York State Hydro, and it's an opt-out program, and some folks did opt out. And so tonight, Glenn is here to report on how it's been going so far, and talk to us about the next steps to allow for that opportunity in the future. So Glenn, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor McKeon and rest of the Town Board for having me, and hello to whoever's out there in Zoom land. So yes, as the supervisor said, I'm Glenn Weinberg. I'm with Jewel Community Power. We are the program administrator for the Hudson Valley Community Power Program, which at the moment includes those 10. You're probably not able to read those seals at the bottom left of your screen, but includes the city of Kipsey, the city of Beacon, the town of Fishkill, the town of Clinton, the town of Marble Town, New Paltz, and several others. And in fact, has grown. In fact, the new group getting ready to go out to bid includes four new communities, including Rhinebeck and Sawerties, and the town of Gardner, as well as the village of Nelsonville. So it's now a group of 14 communities that, and the bigger it grows, the more market power we have, the more leverage we have to to dictate our terms in the marketplace to get better rates, and to be in more control over our sourcing of electricity, which really is at the foundation of this program. This program, first and foremost, as you can probably tell by the imagery here on your screen, is about renewable energy for us. This is a way to leverage buying power within the town, as well as, like I said, 13 other municipalities in the Hudson Valley to to flip the power dynamic in this particular market, in the retail electricity market, and put it in the hands of consumers, not in the hands of utilities or in the hands of the retailers themselves. So right there in the middle of your screen, there's a URL. That's for those that are interested in quite a longer presentation that I'll give tonight, that really details a lot of sort of structural components of the program, as well as metrics for the program so far, now that we are nearing our two-year birthday. Not quite there yet, but getting there. We're about 18 or 19 months into the program. So please feel free to check that out, and if you'd like to learn more, but I'll keep it brief tonight. So we'll just start with some program highlights, you know, and where we are. We will move to sort of update on the communities, talk a little bit about how the program has performed to date, and then sort of the next steps for the town. So first, again, Jewel Community Power is the program administrator. We are a representative of the town, as well as all of the other participating municipalities. And we sort of are led, we are charged with the task of leading the effort and interfacing with all of the important stakeholders in this process, including the state regulators, the utilities, in this case, Central Hudson, the suppliers, as well as the customers, the public themselves, the communities, and the stakeholders within the communities, including community organizations, and parent groups, and senior groups, and all of the other community leaders that have a say in how the town moves forward, and how the town sort of defines its future. In this case, its energy future. So we run the procurement, we run the outreach process, as well as the procurement process with the suppliers to bring back those bids, and educate the community on what's going on, and the program itself, and again, work with the other state stakeholders to meet all of the requirements of the program, as well as to ensure the best possible sort of customer experience and deal for the town. We have partnered with a local group called Hudson Valley Energy, and if you've called us over the last year and a year-plus, or emailed us, or attended an event, an information session, or showed up to you know, a tabling event or something like that, you've probably met Hudson Valley Energy. You've met Jeff Demansky or one of his team. They are really the boots on the ground. They spearhead a lot of the outreach and education efforts. They're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and really, this is, you know, this is the primary focus of that group, of that organization. Jeff and his team have become experts over the years on this program and on energy markets generally. And again, we maintain a call center, a local call center. I know sometimes when you say call center, you picture a sort of overseas big operation, but this is a small, local call center team of three or four that are manning the phones nine through six, Monday through Friday, and answering all of your emails and calling you back when when we miss you and all of that. So we really are dedicated to a local outreach presence for this program throughout the duration, not just, you know, when we launch, but also through the duration of the contract. So as Robert mentioned, this is an opt-out program. That means that if you're eligible, meaning that you don't already have a third-party supplier, or you are not enrolled in a in an assistance program, a bill assistance program like HEAT, or something like that, run by Central Hudson, chances are you are eligible. That means that you will be automatically enrolled unless you choose to opt out. So this does become the new default energy supply for the town. But it is an additional choice. It is not a forced choice. The town is not choosing your electricity for you. You still have the ultimate call as to whether you participate in this, stay with Central Hudson, choose another supplier. Those are all choices that are still available to you. This is just an additional choice on top of those that you already have. For the program. Sorry, was that a question or a just a noise?
No, I think a couple of folks have just joined us. If you could mute your mics, that'd be great.
Sure. So it is 100% New York State renewable electricity supply. That's the default product for the program. It's had a real impact environmentally. I'll show you in the region. I'll show you that on a slide coming up. It is, of course, an opportunity to fix electricity costs and potentially save money against what the Central Hudson rate is through that fixed pricing, just like any sort of fixed price product. And in fact, this month, of course, the Central Hudson rate has been fairly low through the course of this pandemic, but because of increased demand from a cold winter, increased demand for natural gas, the Central Hudson rate in March is about 10 cents, which is very high. To, as a contrast, the fixed 100% New York State renewable rate is 6.36 cents. So in this month alone, Hudson Valley Community Power residents are saving about $700,000 collectively, just because that rate, just because that Central Hudson rate went so high as it does, as it did. And that is sort of typical for these programs. Now, the last year has really been anything but typical for lots of markets, of course, but in a typical case, and what we expect going forward, that's what does happen. You get these months often in the winter and in the summer, where increased demand creates peak pricing. And even over the course of a month, you see these very high rate spikes along an otherwise, you know, sort of mild oscillation of price. And that's when these programs tend to save, you know, lots of money for participating consumers. And consumer protection. This is an opportunity for the whole town and all 14 communities to, again, to leverage their power in the market, write the contract, protect consumers from predatory practices, ensure low rates, and secure renewable energy. So as I mentioned earlier, there's been a real impact environmentally, so roughly about 25,000 households or accounts in the program. We've deferred collectively more than 200,000 tons of greenhouse gas emissions. So that's like a real number. You know, I know that sometimes these numbers, these metrics are sort of hard to put context on, but 200,000 tons is, picture 200,000 tons of anything. That's a lot of tons. So congratulations to the town and to all the other participating communities. Again, our customer commitment to customer service has been, you know, is a permanent fixture of this program. We've had over 7,000 interactions with community members, largely through phone and through email, as well as through in-person and virtual meetings. So we do everything we can to get out in the community and make sure people know what their options are and what the program is all about. And then this being, coming to the end of the first contract, which expires at the end of June of this year, we are now engaged in the process for renewal. So we need a new contract starting July 17. we are now engaged in the process for renewal. So we need a new contract starting July of '21. And therefore, we engage in a new competitive process, a new RFP, to go out and find another deal, and this time with an even bigger group behind us, therefore commanding an even an even lower rate potentially. Again, on greenhouse gas emissions, this is just to look at a few communities as a contrast. And there's Redhook. So you see that number pushing up towards about 50%. That means that the CCA alone has basically covered about half of emissions from, you know, half of greenhouse gas emissions from the town just by covering residential electricity use and greening that that source of emissions. It has a tremendous impact on the overall profile of the town's carbon footprint. This is what's called an environmental disclosure label, just as the sort of proof. And actually, my little Zoom box is covering the the important bit. So if your Zoom box is on the sort of right hand of your screen, you might want to move it over, because what that will show you is, this is the, as you see at the top, this is the Jewel Asset CCA, including, of course, Hudson Valley Community Power. And you'll see there that 100% of our power has come from hydroelectric generators in New York State. Now, you may be asking, why all hydro? There is some wholesale wind available. Almost all of the wind actually, in New York, actually exports its power to New England. Because they get a higher price for it there, because the wind is compensated in a different way in New England than it is in New York. So almost all of the renewable available to purchase in New York State is hydro. And then you may say, well, what about all the solar? What about all that solar that I see on people's roofs and elsewhere? There is a lot of what's called distributed solar. So including the solar that you may put on your roof, or the town community solar project is an example of distributed solar. So there are ways, of course, of participating in those and benefiting from those solar projects at the individual household level. But at this level, where we're buying in this sort of, at this scale, through wholesale markets, hydroelectric is really the primary source of renewable power in New York State. This is a look at the rates, and I know there's lots of colors to keep track of. But I'll just point you, really, I'll talk you through it a little bit. That green and that purple, those purple lines, green and purple lines in the middle of your screen are the two Hudson Valley Community Power fixed rates. That yellow roller coaster line is the Central Hudson variable rate. So you see, sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. We had a pandemic, so you see in the, you know, for most of 2020, it remained lower. But now, as I mentioned, it's way higher. You know, you see that peak, that spike in March, and we expect, you know, that there to be quite a bit of carryover. I don't know if it'll be quite as high as 10 cents in April, but we expect it to stay high and save a lot of money again in April. And that is, again, the benefit of the program, that fixed rate performs evenly every month, regardless of unpredictable circumstances, high and low. Pandemics and cold winters, right? A fixed rate is a, you know, is a, just a smart consumer protective product that does not expose, especially those with fixed incomes, to price gouges or price spikes at the utility. And of course, allows us to secure 100% renewable electricity for all participating residents. A bit about program participation. So you can see here for all of the original ten communities, how it, you know, and of course, Redhook joined a little bit later. They joined along with Town and Village of New Paltz in January of 2020. The others started a little bit earlier, so some of those participation rates are a little bit lower, and other communities still very high in the town of Redhook. So these numbers, we were talking about this with the supervisor earlier, but the 1695 is the number of customers that started in the program in January 2020. 1581 is the representation of a three-month rolling average. So if you're watching the COVID stats, as I know you are, and the supervisor talked about it earlier, you're familiar with this concept of the rolling average, that any one day, or in this case, any one month can often be a poor indicator of participation, just because of the way these things, these data is collected. So we took a three-month average. We did that in November of 2020, and we're just about to publish another update on this. But at that time, in the November of 2020, participation rate was 93%, just over 93% in the town. Next step's really simple. So we've got a resolution, I believe, on the agenda to renew the to renew the program tool, and really, this renewal resolution is, it's simply authorizing us, Jewel, to go back out to bid and see what we can bring back. There are no other additional sort of, you know, restrictions or you know, obligations here on the path of the town. The town has already authorized. They have done this before. They know what they're getting into, so we will go back out to bid on your behalf, bring back prices and bids and recommendations for you, and then the town will make a decision about which, if any, of those bids they would like to take for this next round. You know, my expectation is that we'll have another two-month, two-year contract. That's essentially what the market forward suggests will be the sort of right term. So we've already, we're getting through a two-year contract. This will be another two-year contract. And you know, again, it's up to the town how they want to proceed there. So that's, I'll leave it there, and I hope there are questions, or if there are questions, I'm here and I'm happy to stay as long as you like.
Great. Thank you very much, Glenn. I think it's it's really impressive to see a couple of these stats. One is just how many folks in the town of Redhook hung in there. I know that, you know, by the by the time this period ends, it may not be 93%, but it seems like it's an incredible figure. You know, even compared to some of the other municipalities that joined the program. Also, the reduction in emissions, that's really what it's all about. The importance of this program is that it allows for a significant shift in emissions, not on a case-by-case individual basis, but it allows the bulk, as you mentioned, the bulk in the lowering of the emissions, the bulk in the buying power, and that's really where consumers, you know, often fall short, is that they don't have that bulk buying power. And now that we're joining together with municipalities to work on efforts like this with our streetlights and so on and so forth, we're able to save money and certainly make a difference in the environment. So very much appreciate your work. Any thoughts or comments or questions, town board members?
Thank you for the presentation.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
All right. Well, we do have resolution number, Deanna. What are we on now?
Resolution 21.
21, thank you very much. It's dated March, let's date it March 24. Authorizing a continuation of the town's community choice aggregation program, and I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Bill Hamel in there. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa? Your documents associated with the program as well in your folder. Glenn, thank you very much. I know you're probably off to another municipality.
I came from one, so this was my last one of the night. So it was just a doubleheader for me tonight, but thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, very good. We'll keep up the good work, and we look forward to hearing the results of your RFP.
Great. Thanks so much, guys.
Okay, bye-bye. Okay, we have, next on the agenda is another presentation, and this time it's from Aaron Canaan and Sarah Emboden, and it pertains to the Audubon Sustainable Communities Project. And I believe Christine Kane, what would you like to tell us about your participation tonight?
Actually, I'm going to be recusing myself, so I'm gonna mute myself and turn off my camera. So if Robert, you could text me when the presentation is done, so I can come back in.
Okay, very good.
And that's because my organization is involved in this project, so that that's why I'm recusing myself, sorry.
Okay, thanks very much. All right, Sarah, Aaron, welcome. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Who would like to give a little bit of background and begin your presentation? Would like to start?
I think I'll be kicking us off, and I think if Matt has our presentation, I think he said that he would put this, put it up on the screen for everybody. But I just want to start to make, just to make sure people understand that this is part of Audubon International, which is a nonprofit that focuses on helping communities think through what it means to live sustainably and have like an engaged community sustainability process. So this is not National Audubon Society, or whatever it's called, the People with the Birds. And so Christine Kane is an employee of Audubon International. That's why she's recusing herself. So just want to make that clear for folks. Two different organizations. This one's based in New York State, and I think people who are frequent watchers of the program know that Redhook enrolled in this program back in 2019. And now we are coming here to talk to you about what it looks like to start to wrap this up in the final stages of the project. So if you want to go to the, well, yeah, I just want to make sure people saw. So basically, the way we've thought about this is that this is an opportunity for Redhook to reflect together on what makes our community special and how we're connected to each other in this place. And so you can go to the next slide, Matt, but as we go through, you'll see that a lot of the way Audubon has structured this process is all about helping communities really reflect together. So I just, a reminder, this slide is a reminder about like what the mission of the project is. I won't read it to you, but you can see it there. But essentially, we started in 2019. We're hoping to wrap up sometime next year. And so we are in the final stage. You'll see the planning group is there. This planning group came about from Redhook Together. So the town of Redhook is the main applicant for this grant and the recipient of any funds that come in. But then Redhook Together, under the leadership of Lori Husted, really took on this challenge of engaging with the community in Audubon's process. And so then this working group, planning group, came out of Redhook Together. So you'll see Lori kind of representing the town CAC, Aaron Canaan from Bard, Sarah Ugolini from the Community Center, Donna Jardine from the Library, Nick Acienzo from the Acienzo Foundation, myself as sort of a person at large, I guess, a community member, Sarah Devere from Bard, Kim McGrath from the Chamber of Commerce, and Anna Dolan has been our student intern. So there's two kind of final pieces of the project. One is a report that summarizes our findings and talks about the next steps that, based on all the engagement that I'm about to walk you through, we're recommending that the town take on, and I think the timeline is undetermined. We can set it usually like within five years or so. So one piece is the report. And then the next piece that Aaron is going to talk about is the community engagement project. So there's sort of a two-parter. It's first, you, in the stage one and part of stage two, you really interact with the community and get all your data and analyze it, and then you do a project to sort of show sort of the accumulated findings, and you do the report as something to hold on to and keep moving forward. You can go to the next slide. Anybody have any questions so far? I don't mind stopping if you seen some shaking heads. Keep going. Okay, so this didn't come through, and I don't know how you guys make PDFs. It looks like you're printing them and then scanning them, which is an interesting choice. I went to a lot of effort to make this highlighted for you, so it wouldn't be so overwhelming. But anyway, so there's 15 areas of research in the process, and you'll see them outlined here. And they really kind of very comprehensively cover all the different parts of community life in Redhook. And essentially, what they have you do is go through and ask very in-depth questions in each area. Some of them overlap. For example, agriculture has a lot of questions about open space, and then you'll see that there's also an open space area, which goes into more detail about open space. So there's a lot of overlap. But it really makes sure you've kind of covered all your bases, thinking through sustainability, not just about sort of the typical things we think of, recycling and energy use and like environmentalism, and really kind of thinking through all the different aspects of community life, how we use our land, the public education process around different, oh, look at that, that's better. Thank you, Matt. So that's, or whoever made that happen. Thank you. Yeah, any questions about this? There's, so basically, the two tools that we use during this process, there's a gigantic spreadsheet that I'd be happy to share with anybody who'd like to see it, that has all the questions in each of these categories. So it's 16 tabs altogether, 15 topics in one general. And then each one has about 25 to 30 questions in the tab itself. And then where Redhook fell. So then if you go to the next slide, you'll see that basically what we did was we engaged a lot of different stakeholders in the process, including some of you from the town, town committees, lots of different groups you'll see listed there, as well as a community survey that had 183 respondents, and then some specialists in each of the areas. And basically went through the spreadsheet together and tried to answer, like, where is Redhook on open space protections, right? Or where is Redhook on energy use, both specific to like the town campus? And then also outreach to residents on energy use, that kind of thing. So it's pretty comprehensive. And some of the discoveries we made are basically, they don't really allow you to go to the next stage unless you can get to at least 50% in every area. And what we found was that it was not a very far reach for us to get there, because Redhook is, won't be surprising to any of you, is extremely engaged in all these areas and has been very forward-thinking about, say, I'll just mention open space again, since I've been mentioning that, and energy use and public education and all that stuff. But we are in many areas, just about at that 50% threshold, which means there's still a ton of work that we could do. And so what's helpful about the process is that it outlines for you many ways that you could engage further. Some of the areas that I just listed here, there's several, but one was communication to the public. Things like signage and pamphlets and websites and all kinds of ways that we engage. Just opportunities for community building and economic development. There were several other areas, but those are the basic ones that that I thought might be interesting. Any questions so far about how we engage stakeholders? This is basically from 2019 to now, so almost about a two-year process-ish. All right, you can go to the next slide, Matt, or whoever. So our next steps, as far as this piece of it, are to create a report that summarizes our findings and the ways that we engaged our stakeholders, and then choose one to two meaningful actions in each category, each of those 15 categories, to propose that Redhook take on, say, in the next two to five years. And our thinking around this is to basically think of it as like, try to do sort of one short-term goal and one long-term goal, one long-term action. So trying to think of an example, I should have had one right off the top of my head. Well, for example, with, if you can go back to the 15 categories, Matt, for a second, there's one, transportation includes roads and stuff, right? So like, right now, you're going over your highway specs. So one action item we could choose would be like, update the highway specs to include walkability and blah, 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 right? Like, do a complete streets committee. That would be a relatively easy win and like, short-term goal. And then a longer-term goal might have something more in-depth about about, you know, transportation, say, town-wide, you know? And so what we're really looking for, are you at the 15 categories? Yeah, go back to this one. That's great. If you just stay there, sorry. Yeah. So what we're really looking for, we've just barely started in this part. Basically, they want you to identify your two action steps and then kind of list out, like, who will your partners be on these actions? And what's your timeline and that kind of thing? Nothing too crazy. But we'd love to have a town board liaison at this point, because But we'd love to have a town board liaison at this point, because it really is at the point where we don't want to put actions on here that you're just really not interested in pursuing or really don't, you know, go along with sort of the basic flow of where the town is going. Not all the actions need to be taken on by the town itself, but they, because the town is the, like, the lead applicant, they really ought to be, you know, sort of approved and, and reviewed by you. And we will have you review the report, of course, the draft report, before we get too much further. But it would be great to have somebody from the board who could maybe not sit in on every meeting, but really be part of this next sort of discernment process. And just some feedback about how you'd like to be involved in the report going forward. So that's one of the things we're asking you for tonight. And then Erin will talk about the, the final project that we're looking at as the sort of culmination. Any questions? Or thoughts before we move on to art boxes?
Thank you, Sarah. The only thing I would add before I, I get to the art boxes is that we did meet with the committee that did this review a couple of years ago. In Hilton Head, actually. And they have a very useful tool that they've maintained since that time, that's helped them determine committee work, volunteer work. They established a set of goals and they've been checking in on those goals. So it's, it's a useful tool to identify goal-setting objectives and, and a way to engage the community generally. So it just, overall, seems like a very useful mechanism to help think through how we might do some of our collective volunteering work over the next couple of years. That's, that's just one, one way to think about it. One of the end products of this outside of the report is that we are meant to do a, a public-facing modest community project that we have a bit of funding for from Audubon and, and commitment from some of the other local resources. And as we were trying to imagine, really how we might do something that's a little bit different and maybe that represents all of the different ways that makes Red Hook Red Hook. When we think about what the industries in Red Hook are and what gives it the small-town feel, placemaking around agriculture, history, art, education, the new trails and our connectivity, you know, our increasing connectivity between the villages and town with the new trail development, our libraries, and generally the small-town feel that includes a lot of small businesses. And we know that there's been a lot of conversations around how to help and support our small businesses in this particular environment. And since we are thinking about sustainability really broadly and the importance of, you know, how COVID has really impacted our community and, and what do we need as we are able to kind of come back into place together? So some celebration, some reflection on what it means to be in community and how being in community now might be a little bit different. And also just a way for us to interact with this as things develop over the course of time. So how can this be something that is, you know, a project that can be taken on that's, that does change over time, but isn't so overwhelming that it requires a whole bunch of people to manage, manage it? So we thought first about little libraries, which I know many of you probably are aware of, where the free libraries, that they get a little box like this one, people put, put free books in and people can take books out. So we wanted something that might be slightly interactive. We wanted something that would be sort of educational. We wanted something that would be able to be placed outside and where people could sort of interact with it. And so we came up with the idea of doing these art boxes. We're calling them art boxes, but they really can be, whatever we want to call them. Where we would start modestly with just four, with a goal of having more. Many of us were thinking a lot too about the, the different towns like in Saratoga that have the horses that are, you know, painted and the cats in Sagrades, that it would, it would be some reflection of that, where people could come and see it, and it would be sort of artistic. But that because they would be changing over the course of time, they wouldn't be a sort of one and done. Like I've seen, I've seen it. And now that's it, where it would be reflective. So we thought of these art boxes and they, we would put a call out to artists to do an installation. So it would be have a public art theme and we could support our local artists with stipend to, to do the art. We could maintain the boxes. And then we could also around the sides of the boxes, have space for different pamphlets, maps. We were thinking trail maps. We were thinking the, 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 the map that has all of the different cultural and business sites around town. And we were also thinking about other kinds of sustainable maps. You know, why, what, what about this is sustainable and how is Red Hook different? So that it could be both educational for people in the community. So as you're walking along with your children and you might come along one of these things, you might check the boxes out. You might read new materials. And it can also be attractive to tourism. So maybe even placing these boxes on some of those maps so that people could follow the trails, you know, look for them, see what, what, what the art in it is different throughout the course of, of the year. We're thinking modestly that really we would only change the art in them one or two times a year. So again, trying not to be an onerous process. And then we would work on developing some kind of committee that would sort of oversee this project and, and advertise and market the project so people were aware of it and liaise with, with folks in town. And I think one of the things that we thought a lot about when we were listening to the community is that there's, there's a, an interest in both preserving what we have, while also really being part of this really relevant conversation around sustainability and what it means to, to preserve what we have going into the future, regardless of what may, what challenges there may be and how one of, one of our deepest resources really are the people. So this box can sort of embody the reflection of the people at the time that are interacting with it. So that's, that's where, why the art and the, and the materials can really be quite interesting for us to think through. And there's an element where we could engage all of the different educational resources that we have, the college, the, the, the school district and the, and the libraries, along with the arts and cultural centers that we have as well. And so there's, we see this as a way that children can be involved, the schools can be involved. And people can really work to make it its own. So it could have flexibility without being overwhelming. And it again is sort of a modest step in this direction. And that perhaps it could also then inspire some other ideas or thoughts. You know, we could think about a day where there could be sort of a bike around town and where, you know, stopping at some of these sites would be possible. So that it's sort of an endless amount of interfacing that could happen, both for the local community and beyond. And we felt that this was a way that we could, you know, really make a nice impact locally. So Matt, if you could go to the next, I don't think that there's much on the last slide. Thank you. So we already have a local woodworker who's interested in helping support it, and he's going to donate his time. And we have a number of volunteers that are interested in, you know, going through this first foray and committed to making this project happen. And again, the, the, the project fits within the funding that we have with some potential for additional funders, both now to support whatever additional funds there is needed and then maybe beyond to continue supporting it. We have lots of ideas about locations. We felt like we, we kind of got as far as we could without input from the town and without input from other folks. So we thought we'd come, we'd pause our brainstorming. The goal would be is if you think this is a good idea, we could start the four and that we could actually get them up and be prepared to have them ready for the summer as we, again, kind of think about impacts of COVID, especially on local businesses in our community, and use this as a sort of celebration. It's outdoors. It's, we could still, we could inaugurate it safely. We can encourage people to do sort of self-tours and visits and things and beyond. So that's, I think, where I'll end. And, you know, if you have any questions, complaints, concerns, please feel free to share. We're willing to hear it all. But this really would be a, you know, a collaborative effort and with the town and volunteers of the town, so.
Well, thank, thank you both, Erin, Sarah. Thank you very much. And I'll just interject for a moment, the art boxes, I think, is a fabulous idea. I think it's terrific. And Erin, I think you hit the, the nail on the head there, which is that, you know, the fact that it will rotate and change will make it, you know, perhaps a lot more interesting than some of these other communities that have chosen a thematic, you know, animal-based, if you will, said the farmer. You know, throughout the community, I, I would even love it if, if we could do, you know, 10 initially. I mean, let's, let's see how you all fare with your artists and with your funding and with your locations. But I think it might be fun to have, you know, at least a critical mass so that people can start to talk about them and, and artists can start to let their circles know where, where their art box is. But that's just my initial reaction. Others, what, what do you think about this proposed project?
The only comment I would have is, think carefully about where you place them so that these are artists who are making this, and we don't want their work to be an invitation to vandalism. And if you drive around town, you see there are some knuckleheads out there that take batting practice with people's mailboxes. You know, people put their heart and soul into this kind of work and you don't want to see it, you know, getting damaged by some, you know, bad behavior.
We've had that extensive conversation and we've been talking with Jay, who is the, the woodworker. And the, the box that you see is just an example, obviously, it's just something that we've seen on the, you know, on the internet. But we, the, the, the glass part would be sort of a, something that would be a little bit, it would be very hard to actually vandalize. And the way that the box would be sort of self-contained and, and difficult to destroy. So the way that it would be built would be sort of sturdy, because it's going to be outside as well. We do know that that is a risk and, you know, we, we, we will be, the, the boxes themselves could be at risk. We, we think the, the woodworker thinks more than what the art inside of it, just given how he's going to construct them. But obviously, that is the concern. And, and we, we, we know that this will take some commitment on our parts and then how we grow the project and how do we maintain them and support it and do check-ins on them and make sure that, you know, we're responsive to anything that happens. You know, we have had public art sculpture works for, over the course of some summers, there was a three or four years where we did that. I think people left things alone mostly. So, so we do know that these will be in maybe slightly more remote places. So we were thinking that initially, starting with four also means that we could start to see how people interact with them and, and, and will there be problems or, or not? And that we would put them in some places in the community where there might be cameras as well, so that we would avoid some of that. But that's a great point, Bill. We, we've been sort of mulling that one over ourselves.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was very successful when Red Hook Can did those art installations throughout the village. And some really interesting artwork that we all got to enjoy.
Just on that topic, I just wanted to mention that we have been working with Juliette Harrison, who was part of RH Can back in the day, and, and Joel Griffith also. So two people who are artists or art adjacent, who have been just helping us think through some of the implications as far as the art part of it.
And I do want to give them a shout out. The Red Hook Can is actually what inspired the idea of pop-up galleries and how vibrant a time that was with all the artists who were really informing our public spaces. And it was right after the downturn, the 2008 downturn, when that really happened and, and helped revitalize the village. That was another thing. We were sort of thinking, okay, when have we been in kind of time of crisis? When have things? And so we, we sort of leaned into the same, similar things at this, at that time. And we were being sort of authentic to Red Hook's voice, and it feels like this is another way to lean into that when we're hopefully emerging from a crisis and that, that, the best way to do that is to be just authentic to who we are.
Great. More thoughts? Anyone?
Yeah, I think it sounds great. Thank you for all the work that you've put into this.
Yeah. And we, we will definitely get back to you about a liaison. We're, we're going to draw straws and, and then we'll have someone get in touch with both of you. Thank you so much for all the work. And, and obviously, the folks who weren't able to join you tonight on your team, we appreciate it. It's so important. You know, we talk about renewables, we talk about clean energy. We talk about resiliency, and it's all about sustainability in the, in the end. And so, you know, having some sort of mechanism to continue to document and track where we are. And we do a fair amount of benchmarking here as it relates to our energy consumption and performance with a lot of the initiatives that we've endeavored with the last several years. But I think it's a really great idea to, to, to get this, you know, put somewhere and to be able to track it year by year or a month by month. So thank you both. Thank your team. And you, you'll be hearing from us, but it sounds like we're thrilled with the work that you're doing. So now you're stuck doing more of it in the future.
It's okay. It's one of those projects, once you get into it, you kind of can't stop, you know, because you know too much, you know, and you just have to keep, I don't know, coming to some more conclusions. So if you don't appoint a liaison, we're just going to put in some really loopy action steps. And so it might be a good idea to think about it. But anyway, it's really nice to see all of you.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Erin.
Thanks for listening.
Keep up the great work. All right. We're on to agenda item number three. And that means that we can invite Christine back on in. Okay, so going back to the item that was the subject of the public hearing is the third scheduled 5% increase in a five-year series of rate increases for the water district. And again, more information, Matt, if you'd be kind enough to scroll. We're gonna entertain the resolution in a moment. But if you would see the figures are proposing to have the minimum change from $44.88 per quarter to $47.12. And by comparison, just to give you some idea of how relatively affordable it is, you can look at the Village of Red Hook, for example, their regular village rate is, Matt, if you'd be kind enough to scroll to that page, the Village Water Rates Current. Scroll on down, please. All right, there we go. That's the Village of Red Hook. So their regular village rate is $84.77. They have a senior and a senior housing rate for that development. There are caveats, of course, up to their minimum, which is 5,610 gallons. With regard to the town's water district, the, the rate is for up to 9,000 gallons. So, you know, this is an extremely competitive rate that we have and rate that we will have when it's increased by $2. And what is that? Something like $2.25. But I did do some analysis, which I provided for you on consumption during the course of the last year. And as you might expect, stands to reason, the water consumption during this pandemic has been inordinately high. And so without even increasing the rate itself, there's been a fairly significant increase in billings for the last 12 months as, you know, children are no longer using the water in the schools. Most of the week, they're using more of it at home, for example, or folks are working remotely and therefore consuming more water again at their residence. So there's been, from what we can tell, at least a 15% increase in the billings for that period. And so what I recommended to you and which I would ask for your support is, is that we go ahead and entertain the water board's request for this third annual 5% increase. But we delay But we delay implementation of that until the fourth quarter of this year. So become effective October 1st. And that'll do two things that'll allow for the opportunity for the current rate to, to be stabilized while there is additional consumption. And then when it's brought on in the fourth quarter, it, it would be our hope that we will have, you know, return to more of a normal consumption rate. And the impact on folks within those districts. And as you recall, the water district essentially is most of our residential subdivisions. And so, you know, undoubtedly there have been people who have been financially impacted by the pandemic. So to the extent that we can accomplish our goal of relieving a little bit of pressure. Now granted, we're just talking about a couple of dollars here for each quarter, but I think it would certainly be a wise move to do so. So any, any thoughts on that, folks? Before we go ahead and entertain this resolution? Okay.
Robert, is there a reason why we would vote on it now rather than waiting a little bit later in the year to see whether things are returning to normal closer to October to have this vote closer to the fourth quarter?
It's just, just for simplicity, we already have had the public hearing. We would then have to go and renotice and do all the legal work. It would also, you know, I discussed this with the water board, they would be in support of delaying the increase for a couple of quarters. But, but they did not indicate that they would be in support of, of not having the increase. And again, you know, the, the, the line of thinking for the folks at home, if you are a consumer in the water district and it's being played out across America right now and, and locally here is that the communities that did not put aside funds each and every year are getting hit with huge increases. I think the Village of Tivoli, those consumers are looking at potentially a doubling of their quarterly expenses when you take into account the millions of dollars for replacement of an entire system. So I think this is sort of a compromise between what the board has asked for and what, what perhaps makes sense as far as the economy. Now, that said, Jacob, we could come back if things aren't returning. And in August, we could say we've changed our mind. We don't want that increase to take effect October 1st. So we can also accommodate your suggestion as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Other folks, any, any thoughts on that?
I, I actually, I think it's an interesting suggestion in that because as you mentioned, part of the reasoning behind the rate increases is to be able to plan ahead and put money aside for these capital expenses that are coming. So by delaying it, you know, two quarters, it does have an impact on that, but it also does give people the ability to, to plan and be prepared for, you know, to know that the change would be coming, you know, unless as you just explained or gave as an example, we come back later and change it. But at least people would have time to, you know, be prepared for the change.
Good point, Christine. Absolutely. Yep. And again, this, this would be in October 1st. It would be the third of a previously planned five-year 5% increase in order to continue to reserve funds in preparation for what is anticipated large expenses. So.
One quick thing.
Yeah.
As the town board's liaison to the water district.
Yes.
I may be perhaps a little more granularly familiar with some of their aging issues.
Yes.
And if we hadn't had the large consumption from people being home during the pandemic, you know, I would be, I would be looking at putting this in place now. Given the cost of repairs and replacements that are inevitable, they will happen. It is an aging system. Some things more than others. And there are some upgrades that may actually have some cost savings by reductions in labor for certain, you know, meter readings and things of that nature. I, you know, I think it's been very prudent on behalf of the water district, the way they plan this thing out. They're still going to be short. You know, when the bad thing happens, the still probably be financially short, but it'll be a far smaller increase than looking at, I didn't realize that Tivoli was looking at a 50% increase. You know, it could be a whopping increase. So I think this has been very prudent, well thought out and, you know, carefully reviewed. And I, and I think it's the right way to go.
Yeah. It, it probably would behoove us to invite Hank back in as we approach that quarter and maybe refresh some of the quotes that we're seeing with the, the infrastructure and the potential costs associated with that because as I mentioned earlier, Red Hook Village, the bids came in way above what they were told to expect by their engineering firm. So costs are not getting any cheaper for this infrastructure. So why don't, why don't we do that as well? Have Hank come in and we'll take a fresh look at it again, maybe around August or so. How does that sound?
That's a good idea.
Okay. All right, very good. So this is resolution 22. Diana, do I have that? Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Date of March 24th, 2021. It's a resolution approving the water rates and charges for Water District One increasing to $47.12 for up to 9,000 gallons per quarter. And from $5.46 to $5.73 per 1,000 gallons over that 9,000 9,000 gallons. And we are making the one change, which is that we want to make the increase effective October 1st, 2021. And as we mentioned, if we need to revise that, we will, we will in fact do so. Okay, so I move resolution 22. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Bill O'Neill got in there by a hair. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Okay, moving right along, a resolution to set public hearing. I don't think we'll call it a, we've since realized we don't need to have a public hearing. So why don't we just say that at our next meeting on April 13th, Tuesday, April 13th, we're inviting any comment from the public. We've also sent this draft to the union for review to the highway superintendent. It's a public employer health emergency plan for the town of Red Hook. And we will have that on the website front and center for you folks to take a look at. Did anybody have any specific comments that they wanted to make tonight on that draft plan? It comes via Duchess County, who hired a consultant to draft a template for local communities. And obviously we tailored it to our, our situation as have other villages and towns. Anyone? Okay, so look for that, for us to approve that on the April 13th. And we invite some input on that as well. All right, that is item number four. We do have resolution number 23. It's a request from our rec commission. There's more maintenance requirements for Rec Park West. As you know, it's, it's a large parcel and requires a fair amount of brush hogging, mowing. We're going to be doing finish mowing over there now. They need a reliable tractor for that. And they would like to move some of the Parklands money over. They're going to dedicate that other tractor towards the cemetery work. And so we have some budget adjustments that take that into account as well. And you have the request from bookkeeper as well as a draft resolution 23. Any questions before we entertain this? Okay, so I'm gonna.
I, I don't have a question, but I just don't think we have the whole thing in here. But the rec committee issued, gave us a pretty detailed report as to the needs for the type of tractor for the Red Rec Park West property. It's of course much different property to maintain than Rec Park East. So that's why we, that's why they're looking at a different type of equipment, piece of equipment rather, and a more heavy duty type of equipment. So, but meanwhile, they have, as is summarized in this report, we can still make use of the tractor that we have, for instance, at the Red Church Cemetery. So I think they gave it a really good look, ways, best ways to save money on it as possible.
Thank you, Christine. Any other comments? If not, let's entertain a resolution number 23. And I would like to, as an addendum, ask you to also support the budget adjustments that make it possible. And that's for transfer of funds from Parkland's money to Rec Park Equipment. And I so move, did we have a second on this?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, and all in favor? Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, folks, we're, Matt, we're on the, the road to board reports. And Christine, would you be kind enough to summarize for us the planning board meeting? And I think Matt has the meeting minutes up on the screen.
I guess it would, I guess it would be helpful if I unmuted myself.
That would.
Yes, so this is the planning board, the minutes from February 1st. And they did have a public hearing on a special use permit for a cottage. There's been quite a few actually applications for these types of permits for cottages lately in the town. I'm not sure if that is a result of you know, the pandemic and people needing more space to work from home, et cetera. But that's, we have been seeing some changes in that. As you can see from other things, there's a minor subdivisions continue to also be a focus, I guess, of applications at the planning board also. And they are also continuing to review a special permit for, well, an application to amend a special permit at Greg Farm to install a second grass airstrip at the farm. And it has been generating quite a bit of interest, as you might imagine, and a comments from neighbors and other people in the community as to, you know, why you need to have two airstrips on the property and what the uses would be and the types of planes that would be using it, et cetera. So they have, they did schedule a meeting for, I mean, a public hearing for that on, earlier this month on March 1st. And then also there's an application for a site plan at a different spot at the Greg Farm, I believe, for a tasting room. It's, it's going to be a retail shop, which would be selling cider and beer, and it would have an outdoor seating area. And, and they are going to have a public hearing, or they were going to have a public hearing for that also. And there's another special use permit for a an application to establish a daycare, child daycare center on Linden Farm Road. And that also was moved towards the public hearing on March 1st.
Very good. Thank you very much, Christine. You thought you were finished, but unfortunately there's another report for the March 8th meeting.
Oh, sorry. Yes, so they, again, more discussion of some of the other ones I just mentioned. For instance, the schoolhouse permit on London Avenue was continued as far as new business was concerned. Bard College submitted a site plan for some changes at, at Klein Commons, which is in the, sort of in the center of the campus as well as a small addition to the Fisher Studio Arts Building. And then there's a proposal to add 1,800 square feet to the US China Music Institute. So there's a an application that has been already, is continuing to be reviewed, I guess is the best way to put that, for a donut and coffee shop in the TND District in the town near the village. So that's also continuing to proceed through the review process. And other people may have heard that also there is an interest by, should I should say Tesla to install charging stations, electrical vehicle charging stations in the Hannaford parking lot. So that's also something that is going to be moving forward.
All right, thank you very much, Christine. Bill O'Neill, would you kindly give us a quick summation of the ZBA?
The ZBA, we met on March 10, 2021 and reviewed an application by David King for to construct a detached garage on his parcel at 2 Hewlett Road in the RD 1 zoning district in the town of Red Hook. And they scheduled that public hearing for April 14, 2021 by remote ZBA meeting. So anyone wishing to attend the public hearing remotely on April 14, 2021 or to make comment is asked to please make arrangements with ZBA clerk Anne Rubin at 845-758-4624 or at A R U B I N at redhook.org. And comments may also, of course, be mailed by the post office or emailed to the town clerk or to the clerk of the ZBA.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. That concludes order reports. We're now on to department reports, which means we've gone to the dogs, Bill Hamel.
Well, fortunately it was relatively slow. There was one incident that occurred at the end of February where a chihuahua bit a woman riding her bicycle, chose not to file any charges. The child was healthy and it was subjected to the standard 10-day quarantine for rabies. And that's, there was one nuisance dog back in January with, that really was just like a barking dog issue. So I think that's all we have.
Okay. Bill Hamel, while we have you, would you be kind enough to just give a summation of the building department report, please?
Certainly. There are a lot of different pages this time, but I'll give you the long and short of it is for the period of February 20th to March, to March 23rd, 22nd, there were 20 building permits issued. There were 13 CFO searches done. There was a driveway permit. There was a renewal and two sheds and decks were done. The total fees that were collected by the building department were $5,303 for that period.
Thank you very much, Bill. Jacob, would you be kind enough to give the highway department a report, please?
Yes. So in Teresa's report, there are a few different sections. The first is about equipment replacement needs that she has identified. So Teresa says the highway department needs to replace its aging unsafe equipment. In the past two years, equipment purchases have been postponed. The five-year capital equipment plan provided by the highway superintendent has been changed. The five-year capital equipment plan provided by the Highway Superintendent has been changed at will. This trend may result in higher maintenance costs, higher equipment replacement costs, lower levels of service to the taxpayer and potential safety issues as a result of equipment breakdown during times of critical need. So she is requested for twenty-twenty-two, a six-wheel dump truck with plow and wing, a backhoe and a skid steer. And she says if only one piece of equipment can be purchased, it should be the plow truck, since it is a necessary part of winter maintenance and cannot be rented or borrowed if needed. She's identified several potential funding sources, including financing, leasing, fund balances, chips, dedicated, and a dedicated equipment reserve fund. So the timeframe for this, specifically for the plow truck, that piece of equipment takes at least a year to build. And ordering a truck now would result in delivery sometime in twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three. And she says ideally, we would want to have the truck for the next winter, but we may have missed that window of opportunity. She has an overview of current equipment condition, including a two thousand and one international dump truck with plow, which is twenty years old and in bad shape. The backhoe is a two thousand case, which is twenty-one years old with some trade-in value. And the skid steer is a two thousand and three Bobcat, which is eighteen years old. And the attachments can be used on a new machine if we were to purchase one. So the estimated cost of new equipment for the dump truck with a plow would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the backhoe, it would be one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And for the skid steer, it would be sixty-six thousand dollars. So Teresa provided an inventory that includes the cost of equipment. So she's saying with the total of that, it would be approximately three million dollars for highway equipment. And she's suggesting the ideal amount to budget each year for new equipment for replacements would be two hundred thousand dollars. The town does not currently have a dedicated equipment reserve fund in place. So Matt, if you could scroll down a little bit, thank you. So she provided documents, but explained the request in further detail. And she reiterated that since a plow truck takes so long to build, it's important to consider the requests before the budget talks start in July. She says highway law requires an accounting of inventory and recommendations from the Highway Superintendent before September thirtieth. But the condition of the plow truck and the lead time to delivery should be brought to the Town Board's attention in order to make an informed decision in a timely fashion. The rest of her report includes more detail about that summary at the top. So it's on the screen now, but it's talking about the equipment and kind of fleshing out some of the points that she made previously.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Bill O'Neill, would you be kind enough to give the Red Hook Police Department a report?
The February twenty-twenty-one report of the Red Hook Police Department shows that for that period, they responded to a total of ninety-six incidents in February of twenty-twenty-one and acted upon them. Out of which there were a total number of arrests were four. And out of that number, the total number of tickets issued were twenty-three.
Okay. Very good. I'd be interested. I, I think it'd be good to have them come in in the next few months and talk to us about what, what they encountered during the pandemic and if they noticed any trends or you know, whatever type of report they could give us for that period. I think we could learn a lot. Town of Red Hook Recreation Commission, Christine, could I ask you to do a quick summary? I know you mentioned some of the items earlier, whether we were discussing the equipment. But if you could highlight just a couple of things you think maybe the public might be interested in hearing about?
Okay, well, you know, the Red Committee is proceeding with the planning for lots of for summer rec and a lot of other activities at the park. We, you know, don't, don't exactly know what will be available or allowed, I guess. But we're going to proceed to have things ready. So whatever is allowed, we can make happen. So as you can understand, there's imagine there's a lot of work behind the scenes with the rec program and approvals and safety standards and hiring people. So all of that is underway. We are also receiving a lot of requests for different rec groups who would like to use the new turf field that has been put in place. So as a master schedules being developed for that. Some more things that are still being finalized around that park, like final work on the dugouts. And keeping in mind that they will be wheelchair accessible. And other issues at the park, you know, we're installing the security cameras, so they have to have power, power for batting cages. So lots of things happening there. Upgrades to the playground area, you know, more cushion under the playground area. Still looking, we talked about the new equipment already. Still a few other things that have to be worked out is portable restrooms, how we're going to handle that for Rec Park West. And signage that still needs to go up. Remind everybody that the annual fishing contest will be happening on Saturday, April third. So they'll be doing stocking before that. And so anyone who would like to participate in that can reach out to the Red Committee for more information and to sign up. Tennis and pickleballs are continuing. There will be a tennis program, pickleballs continuing to get a lot of interest and a lot of use. So that was a good addition to our park. And we still have that big dirt pile in the south parking lot that we have to deal with. And a few other odds and ends with trees and parking lot lights. But lots of, as you can imagine, this is like, you know, aside from the busy summer season, getting ready for the summer season is also the very, a very, very busy time. So they're, they're doing well for all of us.
Very good. Thank you very much, Christine. Jacob, would you kind enough, be kind enough to report on the Tree Preservation Commission meeting?
Absolutely. So the Tree Commission has continued to communicate via email and phone. So there are five points here. So committee members, George and Kathy Michael, John Kuhn, and walked the Rec Park and Rec Park West properties to assess for new tree plantings. There were two crab apple trees that were vandalized at some point in the recent past and had to be removed. So the Tree Commission is going to replace those. They say that the new Rec Park West has lots of opportunity. And the first steps there are to begin with a walkway that heads west from the parking area. The plan is to plant six to eight trees this spring and then another six to eight in the fall. In a previous meeting, a report mentioned that the prices had been going up for tree orders, specifically for freight charges. So committee members have been communicating by email and phone with Village Green member Dave Pearson about finding a new source for trees, particularly a bare root. At this time, the commission has been unsuccessful and is placed in order with shittles, even though the freight charges have increased considerably. So hopefully, we'll be able to make progress on that for future orders to keep the costs down a little bit more. Third, committee member Eleanor Freary has been organizing the Millroad School Program and the poster contest. Fourth, several committee members attended the Virtual Tree City Conference. And then finally, the committee donated a bluebird nesting box to the new Rec Park West. It's going to be delivered in the near future. And that's everything from the Tree Commission.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jacob. Well, folks, that's all we have for this evening. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add before we sign off? Okay, if not, for the folks at home, stay healthy. We're, we're hopefully seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, but we still have some way to go. We wish you a happy holiday or holidays coming up. And we'll see you again April thirteenth. Good night and thank you very much. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to close the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.